Would make a motion to appoint Ray Bushman as Mayor Pro Tem this evening.
Can you guys hear me now?
Oh, there he is, yes.
Yeah, I'm on my phone, but it seems to be working, so.
All right.
All right, well, I retract my motion.
I apologize, this is the hazard of networking and I have to use my phone, so I may not be as quick at recognizing people, so, you know, we may have to... Because I can always see the person that's talking, so. Maybe it'll get better before we're done. Anyway, my apologies to everyone. I have my lobster hammer here, so. Welcome to the Monday, June 7th, 2021 Virtual Session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Hon. Romero Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rummel.
Here.
Alderman Notes. Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
And Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, in accordance with state statute, I've made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this June 7th, 2021 city council meeting will be held remotely. Hopefully, this won't continue much longer. First item on the agenda is Report of City Officers: Comments by the Mayor. First, I have a few remaining Board and Commission appointments and reappointments to go through for 2021 and 2022. For the Croya Board, Kate Leach is being appointed from the 4th Ward and Kristen Lee is being appointed from the 3rd Ward. For the Board of Trustees of the Police Pension Fund, we have Jay Trees being reappointed from Ward 4 and Robert Engstrom being reappointed from Ward 4. For the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Pension Fund, we have Patrick Lindeman being reappointed from Ward 1 and James Carey being reappointed from Ward 4. I would entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris. Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Lake Forest Day proclamation. I'll read the proclamation and then ask for a vote of approval, and then we'll hear from Ed Garrity from the American Legion, who is the Lake Forest Day Chairman this year. Whereas the McKinloch Post 264 of the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August 4th, 2021, with a view to bringing together the people of our city and the furtherance of civic interest and advancement of community fellowship. And whereas the McKinloch Post 264 of the American Legion honors Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by adopting the theme "Lake Forest," American Legion salutes all those who work so hard to keep us safe. Therefore, be it proclaimed that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair and in pursuance thereof, and Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, and Wednesday, August 4th, 2021, shall be observed as a holiday in the city of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and gather in West Park in a spirit of comradeship and goodwill in support of the ideals of our city. I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, another roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
And Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Ed Garrity, the Commander of the American Legion Post 264 and Lake Forest Day Chairman.
Good evening, thank you very much for the honor, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ed Garrity, I'm a member of the post, I'm also a past commander. Dave Lipinski is our current post commander, or he's going to be, I'll introduce him here in just a second. But I am the 2021 Lake Forest Day Chairman, and we are delighted that you approved it once again. Our post has been hosting Lake Forest Day since 1919, so it's been over 100 years, and I just can't tell you how happy myself and our 220 members are to be able to host it again this year. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our current post commander, Dave Lipinski.
I believe Dave is muted.
Yeah, just, Dave just unmuted. I am Dave Lipinski, American Legion Post 264 Commander. Speaking for the members of Post 264, we're pleased to be able to put on our Communities' Lake Forest Day Celebration for 2021. It has been our pleasure to do so for over 100 years, 102 years to be exact. And we would like to thank the city council for this proclamation. See you at Lake Forest Day.
Thank you, thank you for everything you've done over the last 102 years, and we're all delighted to be back in person again for Lake Forest Day this year.
As are we.
As so are we.
Next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor, and members of city council, good evening. I have one item tonight, and as some of you may recall, a pre-COVID fire department tradition has been to bring new fire apparatus to City Hall before our city council meetings after that apparatus has been placed into service. And really, that was meant as a tradition to both highlight sort of the ever-evolving technology and functionality of these pieces of equipment, but also as a thank you to the city council for your financial support of the department and commitment to ensuring that our first responders operate with quality equipment. Obviously, with a virtual meeting format, that prevents us from showing off any new equipment in person, but credit to Chief Seabert and his staff for thinking through new ways to showcase the city's newest ambulance to you and to the public. It was just put in service, I believe, a month ago, but, you know, people answer that, I'm sure, in short order. They've also developed a video to provide a virtual tour of the newest apparatus. And so before we play that video again, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Seabert, who I believe has a few words. Chief?
Yeah, thank you, Jason, good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to highlight this new vehicle. As I actually thought about it, it's probably a better way for us to highlight it. You can see it going down the road, but you're going to really get a chance to see all the features. I'm really proud of the group we put together. We put together a committee that was overseen by Deputy Chief Cronin, and we have members of each rank of the department that participated. They worked with the vendor to pick the vendor and then to design and build this vehicle from the ground up. It's made to suit the needs of our paramedics, serve our citizens, and help our guys and gals do their job better and serve our residents even better. A brief note, I looked up quickly, we put the ambulance in service on April 5th, so it's been in service for just a little over two months, and it's already been on 288 calls. This is our busiest vehicle in the fleet. 200 of those calls were ambulance calls. We do respond on fire calls as well. As you probably see in the video, we have our firefighting gear and our medical supplies on the ambulance as well as our engines, so every person in our department, from our newest person to myself, are certified as paramedics and firefighters. And I know some of the citizens might not be aware of that, but very proud of this, and they did a great job explaining the details of this ambulance, so I'll kind of let the video speak for itself, and if anybody has any questions after that's done, I'll be happy to entertain some questions.
Hello, city council, my name's Chrissy Custer. I'm a firefighter here at Lake Forest Fire Department.
I'm Battalion Chief Matt Mar.
And today, we are going to be walking you through our new ambulance.
We started our process in December of 2019 by forming a committee of five staff members. All shifts and all ranks were represented. The committee then visited neighboring departments with newly purchased ambulances from different manufacturers. We ended up getting our ambulance custom-built using the Houston-Galveston Cooperative Purchase Process, as it offered us the ambulance we were hoping for at a lower cost than ambulances on the Northwest Municipal Conference Purchasing Collective. This is a new chassis for us. It's a 2020 Ford F-550 from a new manufacturer, AEB, out of Jefferson, North Carolina. Some of the features of the chassis are four-wheel drive, which will be helpful for our Chicago winters, a liquid spring suspension, which provides a noticeably smoother ride, and a lower chassis entry height, which will be easier for family members to get in and out when we take them to the hospital with us.
We now have three of the four ambulances with the Stryker Power Load System. However, this is the first one built with already installed. The others were retrofitted. The ambulance features a HEPA filter system, and we also added an HVAC UV system to keep any pathogens from being recirculated in the back. It has a slightly different layout in the patient compartment, and you'll notice the four-point seat belts. We made accessible equipment from a seated belted positions to keep our paramedics safe. The lighting can also go from a very bright arrangement, as seen now, which is needed during calls requiring more interventions, to a very calm subdued arrangement. So as you can tell, I just turned off the center dome light. I'm now going to turn on our floor lighting, which is the color blue. And we also have our cabinet lights on to help us better identify necessary equipment. We've also added privacy glass to the rear windows so that it can be changed with a switch, and it goes from tinted to opaque. Over the years, we have noticed that people outside the ambulance can see inside when it's dark outside and bright inside. We've added this feature to help with patient privacy. Hopefully, as we emerge from this pandemic, you can come to the PSB and check out our new ambulance in person.
We are quite proud of 241 and look forward to its serving Lake Forest for many years to come.
Aye!
I think the video, as it said, speaks for itself and gives you all the features, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know that it's a very technical vehicle, and it's pretty much an emergency room on wheels, has so many things in there that our paramedics can help everyone with.
Hey, Chief, this is Jed. I also saw the fire rescue boat heading to the beach down Deer Path a couple days ago. It looked tremendous, so between the two of them, that's great news.
Yeah, we've been out training on it all week, too, with the boat, so you'll see the boat coming through town, you'll see the new ambulance in town, and they are both looking very sharp.
Yep.
Chief, I had a quick question. I noticed that the rear of the ambulance is more or less a separate room versus it being open to the driver. Is that the new style of design?
Yes, our older vehicles were bigger, and they had a pass-through window between there, and it really wasn't practical for anybody to get through, and this makes for better use of the compartment for the patient, and it can close things off, and especially with some COVID concerns, it keeps everything in that back area in the patient compartment.
I think the graphics on it are very nice. I saw it uptown not too long ago, and so whoever is doing the graphic design on our vehicles deserves a shout-out. Very nice.
Yeah, they do that at the factory, but we have been using the company up in Lake Bluff that is, we changed our logo over a few years back, and we're trying to make all of our vehicles look with that black on the top and red on the bottom, and that what we call our scramble, the LFFD scramble. So trying to get some continuity, and you'll see, we've just got a few of the old vehicles left that are out of the paint scheme, but hopefully, that won't last for long.
Great, well, oh, sorry, is there another question for the chief?
I was just going to make a comment that, you know, you heard the comment at the beginning about the softer, smoother ride, and I can tell you, having taken a ride in a couple of ambulances with a broken pelvis last fall or last summer, I could tell there was a huge difference between the newer ones and the older ones, and it was dramatically more comfortable. So, more comfort equals less drugs, I guess, right?
Yes, it's in the design for sure. That was one of our highest priorities, is the comfort of the ride and patient.
Great, well, thank you, Chief. Congratulations to the Design Committee for all their hard work, and I would also just note kudos to Pete, really, under his leadership over the last three to four years, the department has dramatically overhauled the majority of its fleet, and he's done so in a very creative and cost-effective manner. So, kudos to you, and kudos to the department for upping your video production quality during the pandemic. You guys have done a very nice job with your videos.
That is all of Jamie Nixon, our admin assistant. She is a rock star at doing that stuff, so couldn't do without her.
Great. Thanks again, Chief, and if there are no other questions for Pete, then Mayor, that would conclude my report.
Okay, next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. This can be done by calling the number here on the screen, 847-810-3643, and also by using the raised hand function on the screen. So wait a minute here and see if there are any callers.
Callers at this time.
Do we have any raised hands?
We do not have any raised hands at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, we will move on to the next item, which is items for omnibus, well, I'll say, we normally have committee reports. There aren't none this evening, so we'll move on to items for omnibus vote consideration, and there are seven tonight. First is approving the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. Second is approval of the May 17th, 2021 appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions as follows. From the Croya Board, Jennifer Riley and Jennifer Durburg deserve our thanks for their dedicated service to Croya. Fourth is approval of the check register for the period of April 24th to May 21st, 2021. Fifth is approval of Benestar as a vendor for the city's Medicare Supplement and Part D drug coverage for overage retirees and spouses. Sixth is consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest City Code regarding the Class K liquor license, first reading, and if approved, if appropriate, final approval. And seventh is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the zoning board of appeals, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Are there any items here that any members of the council would like removed, taken separately, or discussed?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sorry, I can't see everybody, as I said.
Okay, this is Alderman Bushman, if I may, for a minute. I have a couple of questions on item number six, which is the liquor license for the Forest Park Beach. I was wondering, to what extent were we able to have any food service at the beach this last summer during the pandemic?
I can jump in and answer that. If you're referring to the summer of 2020.
Yes.
We did have the concession stand open. I believe it opened around mid-March, and by all accounts, my understanding is that they had a banner year. It was very successful.
Okay, and for the liquor, in the past, we've had a defined area that we asked everyone to stay within. Do you intend to, again, now proposing to offer hard liquor? Again, hope to define the area in which that liquor can be taken to?
I believe so, but I'm going to ask Sally Sparthod, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to speak to this and any other questions that anyone has about this item.
Good evening, everyone, this is Sally. Alderman Bushman, that's a great question, and yes, we have no plans to expand the area as of now. As we did the trial with the beer and wine, I think as we move into the harder liquor, it's important that we maintain that parameter until we give it its test. Maybe in the future, we'll come back and lift the restriction, but for now, those parameters will stay in place.
Just to offer a comment on that, I did have a citizen comment to me that he thought the area was a little bit restrictive, and I'm not proposing that you open it up to whole beach. I think that can invite other issues and problems, but just to offer that to keep in mind whether the defined area is too restrictive, but again, that's just a comment I'd offer to you.
We will certainly take that under advisement. We will carefully weigh it, and if we decide to expand that space, we will certainly come back to council with that update.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, or requests for information? Okay? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is Old Business: Consideration of ordinances approving code amendments to allow food trucks to operate in the city of Lake Forest subject to limitations as a pilot program and establishing a license fee. And if desired, waive first reading and grant final approval. Kathy Cerniak is going to take us through the proposed ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just as a double check, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Well, this, Mr. Mayor, you said this comes under the category of old business. I would put it under the category of you asked for it, and here it is. What we are proposing as a follow-up to the council's discussion at the last council meeting is a pilot program to allow food trucks under certain conditions. High-level summary: Mobile food vendors, food trucks, carts, would be allowed to operate on public property at community events, essentially based on an invitation basis. We are proposing that this year, we would offer up to 15 permits to vendors, both those who already have a bricks and mortar location in Lake Forest and those who do not. And again, that this would be essentially a pilot program, which would end at the end of the calendar year, and that would give us an opportunity to step back and evaluate what worked, what didn't work, and what we missed, and take into account all different ideas. So interim changes, you have in your packet two ordinances. One ordinance has some very simple, straightforward code amendments, which are necessary because current code prohibits mobile food vendors. Food stores are defined very broadly in the city code, so you will notice in the code amendments, which were prepared by the city attorney, that several of the provisions, it's just noted that they do not apply to food trucks. And then there is a new section that is added that simply states that food trucks are permitted under parameters as established through an administrative directive. The second ordinance establishes a fee, an administrative fee, a processing fee. Local restaurants who choose to have a food truck or a vendor cart would be able to obtain a permit with no fee. No fee would be applicable, and all others would be assessed a fee of $100 for a food truck permit. A permit would be for the calendar year 2021 and would allow any food vendor or existing local restaurant to operate up to three different vehicles, essentially, three different mobile food devices, for lack of a better word, carts or food trucks. Accompanying those ordinances would be an administrative directive. The reason we're suggesting at this point an administrative directive is to give us the flexibility to respond quickly if we need to make some changes to the parameters or regulations as we roll out over the next couple of months. This really builds on what the city council allowed staff to do, encouraged staff to do, directed staff to do last year, to be flexible, to be responsive as we were dealing with the shutdown and working with restaurants and businesses to provide opportunities for curbside pickup or outdoor dining. The flexibility you offered us at that time allowed us to work directly with individual business owners to meet their needs and to really experiment. Administrative directive, as we're proposing it, would establish permit requirements, and I'll speak to those in just a moment, would establish a maximum number of permits that could be issued, would allow license, or would allow food truck vendors with permits on an invitation-only basis to be invited to participate in community events on public property. Those could be events organized by the city, established events such as the Fourth of July Festival, events organized by other not-for-profit groups, Deer Path Art League, Gorton Community Center, but it would also allow the city the opportunity to create special events around food trucks. Perhaps, I think, one of the aldermen at the last meeting mentioned perhaps a food truck evening at the beach on occasion, or we may want to have a food truck evening at the parks or something else. So this would give us the ability for a public event on public rights of way or public property to have licensed food trucks or food trucks with permits participate in those events. Importantly, these parameters would not change the fact that food trucks currently and going forward are allowed on private property for private events. For instance, if a golf course has a wedding and they want to bring a taco truck in for a late-night snack, I know that has happened before at our private golf courses, not at our public golf course, because it wasn't permitted on public property. And as different organizations apply for special events, they would need to identify the food truck vendors so that much like landscapers who we license, when someone comes in for true removal permits or to install a new patio, we verify that those landscapers, in fact, have a license with the city. We would do much the same thing here. When special events are applied for, we would verify that the food truck vendors participating in that event, in fact, have a permit from the city of Lake Forest. in fact, have a permit from the City of Lake Forest. You asked us to look at other communities. We looked very quickly at other communities. And we looked at communities along the North Shore and also communities to our west, generally in this area. Certainly in other parts of, of the country, food trucks operate on a much different basis. What we found is that most communities around here are, are doing exactly what we're doing. They're in the exploratory process. We didn't find any community that broadly allows food trucks. For instance, we didn't find a community that said every weekday between 10:00 and 2:00, food trucks can park on West Street Avenue. What we found is that most food trucks, or most communities, allow food trucks to participate in community events, block parties, organized special events for food trucks. We found that most communities require a permit or some kind of a license, demonstration of insurance, appropriate license or approval from the county. That most communities require a tax identification number so that sales tax revenues can be accounted for, that they require vehicle information, business owner information. And most communities require a processing fee. And, and we found that fee varies a lot from, from zero up to about $150. And we also saw that some communities have created classifications of food trucks, those selling only a single item, those selling only prepackaged items, and those actually doing some type of cooking or heating or warming on-site. We're not proposing at this point that type of a classification. We also found that most communities do require inspections. And we would naturally do that as part of our inspection of any special event, as we look at a stage or bleachers that may have been set up, or inspect a tent. So the, the recommendation from staff at, at this point is, you know, pretty, pretty simply, let's try it. We believe we will learn from this experience. We believe the timing is good because we are just coming out of the pandemic. We know that we haven't covered everything here. We haven't taken the time to, to wordsmith everything. And, and importantly, we haven't taken the time to provide you with a more in-depth code amendment. What we would, again, suggest is that there is a sunset date on, on everything before you, which will force us to do our due diligence and come back to you in the first quarter of 2022 with a more developed program based on our experience. If the council chooses to do so tonight, it would be appropriate to waive the reading of the two ordinances in front of you. One, again, to make minor code amendments, the other establishing a processing fee. Certainly, the council has the option of, of granting only first reading and, and kicking this to the next meeting for final action. We're suggesting waiving first reading because we heard from the council that you would like this to be put in place quickly, this summer, and the summer is quickly passing us by. And, and also this evening to direct development of interim administrative directives that would really detail, as outlined a bit in, in your agenda, that in order to, to obtain a permit, certain requirements need to be met, an application needs to be completed, the limitation on, on the number of, of permits, and, and those other items that we, that, that are included in your agenda packet. Normally, I would end with the recommendation, but I'm going to go one step further, just to share with you some considerations that we will be pondering as this unfolds, and questions we will be coming back to early in 2022. Certainly, I expect there will be more questions, but, you know, questions such as, is our process too onerous? Are we getting interest from local restaurants or food trucks? Are we seeing issues at, at these events? Or is there garbage? Should we be requiring onsite garbage pickup or garbage pickup within a certain, certain radius? Should be, we be requiring some kind of a bond that, that would be taken if, in fact, city crews needed to go out and pick up the garbage? We'd want to really assess and talk with local businesses and understand how they're feeling about all of this. We'd look at safety concerns. We'd look at whether or not certain locations worked better than others, whether certain size site or certain exposure to public streets helped or hindered food truck activity, whether we should establish certain hours, what type of signage might be permitted. So again, I, I think this list will grow longer, but those are just the kind of questions we've asked ourselves as we've moved through this process to date. So with that, I know that Julie is here and can certainly answer questions about the ordinance itself. But with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, and I would be happy to respond to any questions.
Well, thank you, Kathy. I guess I'd like to compliment the staff, the entire staff, and especially Kathy and Jason. I know they worked hard on this, and I'm sure there are many others, to turn this around so quickly and get something in front of us so that we can actually implement that will have value this summer as things reopen. So those are just my thoughts, and I entertain any comments or questions from the council.
Mayor Perry-Lan, this is Alderman Gashkarian. Point of clarification, Kathy, is a processing fee per vendor or per truck?
As proposed, the application processing fee is per vendor. A, a permit would be issued to a food truck business owner that would cover this season, essentially 2021, and it would cover up to three vehicles owned by that vendor. That's what we're currently proposing. Certainly something we'd want to look at further in the future.
Mayor Alderman Bushman.
Go ahead.
I had raised some questions with staff when I first looked at the proposal and have had some dialogue with Kathy and Julie. And I think it'd be good to share with the council some of the clarifications that I was seeking, and actually to follow up on some. First is the, the issue of our changes that we're doing now. And what we're looking at is food trucks on public property. And Kathy, you, you said earlier, and you had in your presentation, the fact that we do not regulate food trucks on private property. We do have a provision in our code that deals with transient merchants and dealing with carts or trucks on private property. Am I missing something there? Do we not have, not have any regulation? So if, for example, a bank wanted to bring two, three food trucks into its parking lot, there's no permit, there's no regulation as to what they can do?
We are not proposing that we would regulate or require permits for food trucks on private property. I'll, I'll turn to Julie, but I believe the council could do that if, if desired. In the past, again, I think the most frequently we saw food trucks as part of a wedding event at private clubs. And, and the city did not get involved in that. But Julie, I don't know if you have clarification to add.
Right, so I, I think what we heard at the last meeting was that we, we were looking at regulating food trucks that use either public property, so it might be at the beach or the park, but also that are parked along city streets. So, you know, traffic issues and, and safety concerns and that, that we would be able to regulate where they are and, and know the businesses. To the extent that businesses are bringing in food trucks for private events, whether it's a wedding, whether it's for their employees, it, it doesn't really have the same implications as selling to individual customers. It shouldn't be driving additional traffic. Most communities do not regulate the food trucks that are coming in for a private event. Some people have a, bring a food truck to their house for a, for a birthday party or a bar about mitzvah or something along those lines. And the city has not regulated those in the past. We, we don't consider that the, the kind of sale. It, it's more of almost like a catered event as opposed to the sale. And, and so we've just treated them differently.
My question goes a little beyond that. It goes to where a person having a parking lot brings in food trucks to offer their wares, goods, food, whatever, to the public. Is that, and, and is, am I understanding correctly that the city is saying that that is not a regulated thing, that it is permissible?
Yeah, that's, it, it's not contemplated to regulate that if it's entirely on private property, no. Right, the city could certainly do that.
Yeah, I, I was just, you know, just surprised that we did not have any regulations of that aspect in, in our, in our code.
I, I do believe that if it's on private property, we would anticipate that it's a private event as opposed to open to the general public.
The other question I had, and, and you covered this, Kathy, were the ordinance talks about requiring a permit for a food truck. And that goes to the point, are we, is the permit going to a individual truck? Or is it going to a vendor? And you've answered that, that it's going to a vendor up to three food trucks. The question then becomes, when the vendor seeks approval for its food trucks, do we intend to define the type of vehicle it is and its, its use applications?
Yes, our intention would be, as a requirement on the permit application, the specific vehicles would need to be defined. And the reason we looked at allowing different types of vehicles is depending on the special event, a, a pull cart might be more appropriate for a, a smaller event, whereas a truck might be more appropriate for other events. We do know that some food vendors have those different kind of modes of, of offering food. So the thinking was that once permitted, a food vendor may use different ways depending on the type of event.
Right, but you, again, to me, the important thing would be that we're regulating the type of food truck that is being used for that purpose, you know, whatever, being adequately defined. And, but you feel that can be done under a vendor basis where you have three, three food trucks being, up to three food trucks being allowed?
Again, we're experimenting a bit. We're, we're, we know this isn't perfect. We know we've probably missed some things. But if, if the council chooses, we can certainly say one permit is, is for one truck or, or cart, so.
And, but to take that the next step, when, when a, an event is being organized and are looking for food trucks, they can go to the licensed vendors and decide which of their food trucks they feel would be appropriate? And then that's part of what goes to the city to, for the overall approval of the event?
Yes, sorry, I misunderstood. Yes, as part of the event, the special event application, we would now require that they define the food vendor. And if that vendor has more than one vehicle, the type of vehicle. So we understood what, what might be involved.
And then we talked about there being two exclusions in 120.01. And Julie, I think will be attending to that. But the last point is, we're being asked to waive first reading on this. And when we have ordinances that have a public interest element to it, I'm for one, feel it's important that we provide the public the opportunity for input. And obviously, when you have two readings, you do afford that, that opportunity. Recognizing there may be situations, and this may well be one, where timing and urgency would indicate that we have justification for doing first reading. And Mr. Mayor, you may want to expand on that or someone else. But I take it, we, we feel we need to go forward with this today in order, for example, to be ready for the July 4th events or, or timing like that.
Alderman Bushman, I can, can offer that Joanna Rollick at the chamber did distribute this information. I did, just shortly before the meeting, I heard from one local restaurant owner who, who voiced support for food trucks at special events, concern about food trucks being permitted more broadly on a daily basis, and support for trying. So I, I think we do have some restaurant owners who have been in, engaged to some extent in this discussion. And I think there's reluctance, but I, I think there's an openness to trying something new. But whether or not to waive first reading is certainly up to the council.
I, I take it before we act, we are going to open this up to public input and discussion, to see if there is anything. And maybe depending on how things develop, staff may want to consider at our next, you know, assuming we go forward and assuming these two ordinances are adopted, that maybe our next meeting, we bring up a status report on it. And again, at the status report, offer to the public the opportunity for any input they want to provide to the council. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from the council?
Alderman Weber, I, I just wanted to comment that thank you so much for working so quickly on this, and I'm so pleased to see us in action. I would love to see this move forward. And I'd like to see us get some other community events, perhaps something new on the table, like our fellow communities, like perhaps Kennelworth, that is now doing something on Monday nights. So that was one of my, one of the feedback I heard from some of the fourth ward residents was getting something at the West Lake Forest Train Station, maybe weekly or monthly. And I'd love to see it happen. And my last comment was, perhaps we should just follow up with the sales tax generated from the sales of these trucks. I'd just be curious to see how profitable it is for these businesses and what's coming back.
Thank you.
I did, I have a question.
Other comments? Sure.
This is Jennifer Karas. Kathy, as far as community events, what constitutes a community event? Is it a city-sponsored event? Or is it anything that the Gorton Center or Ragdale or Alawa? I guess if you could talk, talk a little bit about what constitutes community event. And then also, I'm wondering if you've given any thought to frequency, because it, you know, the summer is condensed here. And, and if there are community events from various organizations that are scheduled multiple times throughout a week, will there be, you know, any consideration given to the number of, of times a community event with trucks that take place?
In answer to the first question, a community event, we really consider that any event that's open to the public. So, so everything you named, something at Gorton. Gorton's having a lot of outdoor activities. Something at Ragdale, something, you know, even the senior center could have something that would be open. Certainly, something that the city organizes at the West Lake Forest Train Station or, or the Business District, as noted by Alderman Weber. So it really is any of those events that really welcome anyone who's interested in attending. As far as frequency, when we receive requests for special events, we maintain a citywide calendar. We, we try and have a coordinated, a point person for putting special events on the calendar. But then we work closely with various departments to make sure we're, we don't have conflict. So we haven't limited, there's nothing that says at this point that you couldn't have an event every, every night of the week at, in some part of town. Now, there are some, certainly Alawa Farm, Gorton Community Center, those are both approved under a special use permit, which carries, carries with it its own regulation. So you kind of have these overlapping special events, special uses. But no, at this point, we're not putting any limit. But again, I think that's something that we want to look at. I, I think we've continually heard from the city council and from residents that you want to see more, more community activity as, as opposed to less. So do we get to the tipping point and start hearing people say stop? Maybe, but again, I think the timing is good because people are anxious to get out and be around others this year.
Okay, thanks, one, one other, one other question. And you and I talked a little bit about how the 15 permits would be issued and that it would, it would be on a first-come, first-served basis. And I know a lot of the, I know we're not going to classify trucks, but if, for instance, you know, the, those first 10 or 15 come in and they're in a particular category, are, are we, are, are we going to? we, are, are we going to try to get a variety of trucks in any way since our, or, or are we going to just allow it to kind of unfold the way, you know, they, they come to the city for a permit?
The thought right now is we would let it unfold and, and we would see what we get. If, if we get, you know, all 15 are taco trucks, when we revisit it in '22, we, we might want to, I, I don't know, I, I'd have to look to the city attorney to see if we could classify it by category of food. But no, again, at this point, we're, we just really want to see where the interest is. There might be 15 permits out there and we only get requests for three. We really don't know at this point, but something to consider, and we'll note that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Notes is there.
Alderman Notes, you're muted. Uh, now you're not.
Kathy, question on health code enforcement. Who, is this anything the city has any responsibility for making sure the purveyors of these trucks are following county codes, or does a county monitor? Whose responsibility does that fall?
We have talked with the county health department. They know we're considering this. We, we talked through some of the issues they're facing, but yes, county health inspectors, the county requires a health permit, and county inspectors do visit these sites. So we're working with them to coordinate. City inspectors would also be on site, but we're really looking more at, at safety. We're looking at electrical cords and generators and stability of awnings and things like that. But yes, we will, depending on what you do tonight, we'll be back in touch with the county, and we will make sure that we have appropriate communication lines open in place.
Would that be part of getting the permit in their application fee, that they have to show that they've got that certificate or whatever that?
Yes, absolutely. They need to have a valid Lake County Health Department license.
Mayor Fran Lea? Alderman Goshkarian? I, I just have one point of clarification. I think one of the previous Aldermen had talked about revenue. Unless the POS is with the Lake Forest address, we shouldn't anticipate any sales revenue out of this, just as a point of clarification, regrettably. Although I have reservations about the timing of this with our economic recovery from COVID, Alderman Bushman's question about the first reading, if we're going to do it, I think we should move post haste and do this. So we have some data to reflect on come January. So I think that we should move forward, even though I have some concerns. Let's, let's allow city staff to work with this and, and be able to reflect upon what 2021 provides us in terms of information.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's Alderman.
Other comments? Questions?
I have a couple of questions and comments. First of all, I would like to echo Alderman Weber. Thank you, Kathy, for putting this together so quickly. And I do understand that, that I think we should move forward also quickly with it. And so waive first reading on it, or we'll lose the season by the time we contemplate all of this. I thought when we were initially discussing this, we were going to offer these licenses first to our local restaurants. Did the staff decide not to do that for a particular reason?
Again, I think it was a matter of timing, as, as you noted. If, if we want to get this off the ground, we are suggesting that local restaurants would not be assessed a fee, they would still need to apply. But we, we did think about, should we allow two weeks for local restaurants to apply? But again, concerned that we're getting too deep into the season and food trucks, I, I think the good ones do get booked. So that was the only reason, is, is just to be responsive to your interest in getting this in place.
But then, then maybe, maybe, rather than waiting two weeks, would it be too onerous to ask, we don't have that many restaurants in town to, you know, because I, I thought we heard broad concern from the council about competing with our local restaurants, and I thought that was a staff concern as well. So, you know, maybe just a phone call to give them a heads up and say, listen, local restaurants, we're doing this, if you're interested, come in ASAP, so that you sort of get first priority. I, I just wonder if we could do that courtesy to our local restaurants, especially since they're coming off of the COVID and being closed and everything.
Absolutely, and I think we can work with the, the chamber to get that word out. And I would ask the city attorney, we could hold back five licenses for, for two weeks, say, and, and keep those available for local restaurants and make the other 10 available to anyone who might come in, if, if so directed by the council. Julie, I, I don't know if you have a concern about that?
Sure, that's, that's just part of the administrative side of things. So I, I think contacting them in advance makes some sense, gauge their interest. You could, you could also hold them back, you know, in, in some respects, some of that depends on how much interest you get when you first talk to them, because again, the season is really short. So you wouldn't want to hold them for very long if, if you had other interest and, and people in line for it.
Great, I just, I just think it's a, it's a goodwill gesture to our local restaurants to give them first priority on this. And then, correct me if I'm wrong here, but, so I'm a, an individual vendor, and I, so we can have 15 vendors and each one of those can have three trucks, so we're talking about 45 total trucks? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, theoretically, but keep in mind, the vendors need to be invited to a special event, to a community event, or would need to apply. I, I don't know if, if we would ever have a, a single event where a single vendor brings all three vehicles. In fact, we could, we could write that into the administrative directive to say that at any one event, a single vendor can only have a single vehicle. That was the intention.
I would suggest that, because, because otherwise, I think my math's right. One, one truck per vendor at any one of them, just to make it clear.
Can I just say something? I think we're really micromanaging this, and, you know, the market will, you know, people are smart.
Alderman Preschlag, can I finish? I have a couple of, thank you. My other question was about possibly the cleanup. I do have some concerns about that and how much the staff is going to have to get involved and the city involved in that. So, you know, again, I think we originally talked about maybe defining a certain, within X number of feet of their truck, they're responsible for picking up the trash that is a, a result of their sales. Can we consider something like that in a directive?
We, we really anticipated that the special event organizer who invites these vendors in would establish those requirements. Certainly, an event at Gorton, afterwards, the, they as the special event organizers make sure that the trash is picked up. At, at city events, we'd certainly do that, but I think we will, at, at least for now, I would suggest that we really rely on the special event organizers to police that. If, if we say a vendor has to patrol and police within a, a certain radius, I, I don't know how city staff would enforce that. But I, I certainly think trash and, and lingering impacts will be something that we'll monitor and will assess as we look at this again in '22.
And, and then the $100 fee, I'm, I'm just trying to, I, I, do we have any idea of what kind of, I mean, what does a taco sell for? You know, how many do you have to do to make up that $100 fee? I wonder if our fee might be a little high, just a consideration. $5, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah, I sell a lot of tacos to make it, to make up $100. So that might be something that we consider down the line, too. I don't know.
Alderman Rommel, I think most, sorry to interrupt you, but I think most people typically would purchase like three tacos. That's what I've seen, like, at some of the local places. So a $15 sale times four people. I think, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised that it'll be made up quickly.
I'd like to remind everybody that, I'd like to remind everybody that this is an experiment. We want to be like Amazon. We don't want to be like Commonwealth Edison. And that's the whole idea, is to learn from doing it.
Right, right. I'm all in favor of that. And so my only other concern would be, would be signage, but, you know, I, I, I think that, that people will probably be respectful of that. I mean, we are a community that is very careful with its signage, and so I hope they will be respectful of that. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
This is Jed Morris.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Alderman Goshkarian. I second his, his view of this situation, and let's proceed as quickly as possible.
Any other comments from the council or questions? Okay, at that, I would entertain any comments from the public. Would it be okay to put up the screen one more time? So any public comment? You can use the raise hand function or dial 847-810-3643, and we'll give this a minute or two to give people a chance to comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. In that case, I would turn it back to, or request a motion to approve an ordinance, two ordinances, one approving amendments to section 113.21, 117.05, 117.2B, and the addition of new sections 120.01 through 120.03, all with a sunset clause of December 31st, 2021, to assure review and if determined to be appropriate by the city council, establishment of ongoing provisions for food trucks. Number two, an ordinance establishing a permit fee for food trucks. And three, to direct the city manager to establish administrative directives establishing operating regulations for food trucks, generally in accordance with those outlined above, also with a sunset date of December 31st, 2021, to allow for review as noted above. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Yes, I approve.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Goshkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
APA 0A, motion carries.
Great, thank you, and look forward to having some fun this summer with this, and, you know, I'm sure we'll learn a lot, and it'll get better, and we'll plug some holes and find some opportunities. So, thanks, everybody, and especially, again, thanks to the staff for turning this around so quickly. This is, this, this, I think, has some great potential, so. The next item on the agenda is additional items for discussion, comments by council members. Anybody on the council have anything they'd like to, to raise at this time?
Yeah, this is Alderman Morris. I've had a couple people ask me, and maybe we could have Mike Thomas at a future meeting, talk about what the Deer Path Lagoons are going to look like when they're all finished. Obviously, it's hard to project when you see the construction underway, but I think it'd be nice if we could have a, a brief presentation on what the finished product of those lagoons and this landscaping and, and all of that might look like.
Sure, I'd be happy to have staff provide an update under the manager's comments at a future meeting.
Sure.
You know, another way to handle that might be to just put some renderings out in the weekly news blast.
Sure, that'd be good, too.
Alderman Morris, we've discussed that at civic beautification quite a bit, the plantings and details and whatnot. So Chuck Myers has a lot of information to share, depending on how specific you want to get. So I think that's great.
Terrific, thanks, that's super.
Right, Alderman Weber's correct. I think I've, people are concerned about what exactly we're going to be planting there and want to be sure that it's native plantings, and, and I'm sure that that's what's planned. So it might be nice to even put out a list of some of those plantings.
Yes, civic beautification is, we've got a great committee who is looking over it closely.
Especially at that particular location.
Yep. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, Jennifer Karas, I, I would like to just congratulate the Lake Forest High School class of 2021, including Lily and Claire Goshkarian and our own daughter, Blythe Karas. They all graduated this past Saturday, a very warm day, but it was absolutely beautiful ceremony, and, you know, of course, there was just an enormous amount of persistence and resilience that had to go into, you know, pushing through these last 12 months, and, you know, they did it with just extraordinary grace. I also want to acknowledge the faculty at the high school. You know, I had the privilege of listening in to numerous Zoom classrooms, and it was really impressive, and I, you know, the care, the concern, of course, the level of teaching. The faculty is just exceptional, which, you know, is no surprise, given that the school was just ranked seventh in the state, just behind Stevenson and, and five selective high schools in the city of Chicago. So, you know, we really are very, very fortunate in our community, such a stellar high school, public high school. And lastly, Dr. Holland, who, as you know, has been the principal of the high school for the last five or six years, who's, who's leaving for another opportunity, you know, I, I just really want to acknowledge her leadership. She's just, really just one of a kind, and we're very fortunate to attract her to Lake Forest, and, you know, I think that she had a, played a large role in, in getting the high school to be recognized as one of the elite schools in our state. So I just want to mention all the work that the high school's done, and congratulations to them.
Thank you. Anything else? One quick update, I guess, that I can provide. I had some conversations last week with Bob Morgan, our state representative, and he has been involved in this Department of, what is it, DCOE, the, basically, the Economic Development Department, with respect to the grant for Burr Oak. We don't have anything specific at this point, but he did report that those monies came through the budget process in very good order, and so he was reasonably optimistic that some or all of that money will be made available to us, you know, sometime later this summer. So we shall see what we shall see. You can never count on these things until the check clears, but, but that was something we were all very, I personally was very concerned about going through and watching the budget process in Springfield with all the maneuvering that was going on. And so a good, a good word on that, at least for now, so. If there's no other business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Okay?
Whatever.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. I apologize for my technical difficulties.